You can sing.
Audience.
As we used to say, you can sing so low, so low that no one can hear. Thank you, everyone that's joining us. I know we were running late. Lots to do tonight in closed session. That means that we were working very, very hard if we're running late. So we will be getting started here in just a second. We're waiting for one more board member to pop in. All right, I think he got it. He's here. I see he is. Ms. Moore, is there any way to sw- there he goes. Okay, got it. All right. All right, so we have all our board members. So we are ready to get started. So I will go ahead and call the May twentieth, twenty twenty-one regular scheduled meeting of the Franklin City School Board to order and welcome each and every one of you. Thank you for joining us tonight. I promise that I will try to make you work as hard as we did in closed session. Hopefully, it won't be nearly as lengthy as what we just had. So first up, a motion to come out of closed session. Do I have a motion to come out of closed?
I move that the school board haven't been in a closed session pursuant to a proper motion come out of the closed session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are out of closed. Next up is certification of our closed session. Do we have a certification of our closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board as such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard discussed or considered.
We have a motion for certification. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our closed session is certified. Next up is motions from closed session. The only item I believe that we have is a personnel agenda. Do we have a motion in regards to the personnel agenda?
I move to.
Ms. Williams, I think you froze up. Are you still there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up is pledge of allegiance. Will you please all join me in standing and for the pledge of allegiance?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I just want to call to your attention, we need approval on the reappointments.
Oh, I do apologize. Thank you for stopping me. We do have one more item from closed, approval of reappointments. Do we have a motion in regards to the reappointments?
I move. Or prove.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor, in favor of the reappointments signify by saying aye, and of course, we'll go through nays and abstentions after that. So all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion carries. Now, if everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Since I had to throw that one all around. Next up, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry. All right, next up is roll call. Ms. Moore, if you would be so kind.
Or Robert Holt.
Present.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Tanya Smith.
Present.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Shelton.
Present.
Jerry McCreary.
Present.
Carrie Johnson.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Next up is citizens time. Ms. Moore, we did not have any submitted electronically. And have we had anyone sign up?
No.
All right. Moving right along. Next up, item number three, consent agenda. We've got a few items underneath consent agenda this week. First up is the VDOE memo. This is with a request for rate waiver from the requirement of the length of the school year. As you may recall, back up through mid-March, we were completely virtual, which was when we switched back to hybrid. And we still had some students that stayed virtual. Next up is the purchase order for the modular. As a reminder, we're looking at that replacement of one of the modulators at SP Morton. And as a reminder, this did not have to go through that traditional RFP process that we've talked about in the past because there's already a plan. It's already gone through that RFP process through the purchaser, so we don't have to go through that. Next up is the VSBA policy updates. As you may remember, Dr. Hollerin presented those to us at the last meeting. I hope everyone has had an opportunity to review that. There is one there that GCPA that does require, of course, a policy to be implemented by the school superintendent. As well as JHH and KNA. And finally, the minutes from April fifteenth, which Ms. Moore had for us at the last meeting for review only. These are coming back, of course, for approval at this meeting. Any questions on any of the items that are within the consent agenda for this week? Hearing none, do we have a motion in regards to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I move to? Well, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the right terminology here. One second. To separate the Virginia School Board decision policy updates to a separate vote?
The VSBA policies?
Yes.
To pull that and vote on that separately?
Yes.
We can do that. Can, I would need, I would need someone to amend the motion. Actually, I would need Ms. Dr. Shelton to amend the motion to remove that. Is, is there a reason why you're requesting that one to be pulled? Is it a particular?
I need to abstain from voting on that item.
Okay. All right. Ms. Williams, Dr. Shelton, would you entertain amending that to vote, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of three point three?
So moved.
Okay. All right, so we are amending the consent agenda to approve with the exception of three point three, and Ms. Williams has seconded the motion. That being said, are any other discussion on that? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye of approving the consent agenda with the exception of three point three.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion carries. So now we have item three point three on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve item three point three on the consent agenda?
I move to approve item three point three on the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
All right. Jerry McCreary, Ward six, abstain.
All right. All right, that motion carries. Next up, item number four, human resources. And that is Dr. Hollerin. Is Dr. Hollerin on with us tonight?
No, she is not. That was.
That will be Dr. Sterling. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I will be doing Dr. Hollerin's report in her absence, and this is a wonderful report. I want to do the presentation of the Franklin City Public Schools newly licensed personnel. This is a first for us. We want to take time to recognize our teachers that have received their licenses this year or licenses that will be pending. You have Keisha Jones, who has been with us for two to three years. We are so, 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 so proud of Keisha. She's an exceptional education teacher, and she received her full licensure. So congratulations. Ms. Joy Coughlin, also curriculum specialist, received her full licensure with Franklin City Public Schools. Newly licensed FCPS staff, you have Ms. Sally Vick, who's going on her third year with us, elementary teacher. She received her full licensure from VDOE and is fully credentials. You have Sharon Martin, who was also received full licensure. Now Sharon is our beloved nurse at the high school, but she went back and took a couple of classes so she can actually teach nursing in the classroom, and she has substituted for us often with the CTE nursing program, and we thank her so, 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 so very much for her support and just going back to make sure she helps the students move forward. Next, you have Tamara Edwards, who has her provisional license. We're very excited. Tamara is our first year with us, and she's a math teacher, and she's also working on her algebra and geometry endorsement. So when she gets those, we'll bring her back to celebrate her new endorsements that she's added to her certification. Next, we have Amy Gay, who has her provisional license. She has hit the ground running, ordered all new equipment, works with students to know their names. She is such an asset to our community, and we are so, 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 so happy to have her. And we want to say congratulations to her, and she's at SP Morton Elementary School. Very, very excited to have these teachers. Newly licensed staff, Catherine Brown, provisional license. She's a health and PE teacher at JP King. We're excited to have her join our staff. Look at that smile. She's happy to have her license as well. And Rebecca Hill, just look at that smile. She is an elementary teacher at SP Morton, and I always love going into her classroom because she is the epitome of a first-year teacher with all of the excitement and just imagination. So many wonderful things are going on in her class, so we are so happy to have her with us. Congratulations to both of you ladies. Next, we have Kiana Reed. Kiana Reed has been with us, I think going on three years now this year. She is an exceptional education teacher that started out, I think, a year and a half ago with her first class. She has stayed the course and has received her provisional license. All of the teachers that I just mentioned also participate in Ms. Burkehalter's New Teacher Academy. So they're just not only getting, working in the classroom, but they're also participating in our New Teachers Academy and getting graduate credit for learning instructional strategies and having a one-on-one mentorship. And you know how Ms. Burkehalter is. She makes certain that they have all of the support and coaching that they need. Next, you have Nikia Freeman. She received her provisional license for exceptional education teacher in Joseph P. King, at Joseph P. King Middle School, and we are excited to have her on the team as well. She is a perfect example for transitioning from a TA to a teacher position. So we want to say again, congratulations to her. She moved herself forward, and we're happy to have her as well. All right, next you have Bianca Wood, provisional teacher at JP King Junior Middle School. She received her license. And Mr. Marquis, congratulations to her. And you have Mr. Marquis Bowers. Poor Mr. Bowers. He is a fine arts teacher, and he has worked with us as a long-term sub, but he finally got his certification. And as a teacher, he was a long-term sub who went from being a media specialist to working with pre-K this year. And he was so happy to get his license, so he will be moving with our fine arts track. And next year, he will be teaching theater at the middle school to expand our fine arts program. So Mr. Bowers, thank you for sticking in there, sticking in there with us, and we're happy to have you on our team. Next, we have licenses that are pending. These licenses have gone up to, applications have gone up to the state. These individuals have completed everything that they were supposed to complete. We just have not received them back from VDOE. So pending, we have Candace Townsend, who's at the high school. She teaches English. Cheyenne Banks, the elementary teacher at Samuel P. Morton. And you already know, Ms. Dawson, Melinda Dawson, she is also one of our transition teachers from TA to teacher. We are so excited for her. She will be receiving her full ten-year licensure, all of them will. And Shakia Barnes at JP King Middle School. Her daughter graduated last year, so congratulations to her. And she is, has received, she will be receiving her full licensure this year. Again, I mean, look at all the work we're doing. Our, our HR department works feverishly to make certain that everybody is taking the right courses, the right tests, staying on track and motivated. We have so many teachers that are going to be fully licensed. Next, we have Janelle Majet. Ms. Majet just can't seem to sit still. She is our elementary teacher, but she also teaches softball at the high school. She is quite the athletic individual, and we are happy that she has received, she will be receiving her full licensure as well. She's a great asset to the first-grade team, and it has been a pleasure to work with her for the last couple of years. Lisa Moore, exceptional education teacher, has joined us, and she's at Franklin High School, and we're happy to have so many of our special education teachers, our exceptional education teachers, get their full licensure. And almost last but not least, we have Mr. Cousins. Mr. Cousins has hit the ground running, coming in this year as the culinary arts teacher. He provides a menu. I think every other week, he feeds the teachers. He has the students working. It has been such a pleasure to have him as a culinary arts teacher, and I cannot wait to see where our students will go, learning under his direction and leadership. Ms. Moore, I think that is the last of them, so if we could just give them an air clap and tell them congratulations. We are so proud of all of our. You already know, as a Title I district, our proportion of fully licensed teachers have increased dramatically, and that's what we want to see.
It was amazing, too, to see quite a few familiar faces, as several of those are actually alum of Franklin City Public Schools.
Yeah, so that TA, grow your own, is really working for us.
Okay. All right, next up is finance and operations. Now, I know I saw Mr. Ryder. But I know he is on with us tonight. Good evening, Ryder.
Good evening, everyone. We have, I just have a couple of short presentations because quite frankly, almost none of this stuff has changed since the last time I presented it. Next slide, Ms. Moore. So there's the legality of when we need to adopt our budget, and here we are. We ordinarily would have to adopt it by May fifteenth, but, or within thirty days of receipt of the estimate of state funds, whichever occurs later. So, you know, when the state calculator comes out, you know, in June, we could adopt this thing in July if we wanted, but we've already scheduled this for now. There will be no more dollar talks with the city because the city has already adopted their budget. So now we have to adopt ours. So that's, you know, that's just a slide from before of, you know, the relative percentages of where our revenue comes from. A little over half comes from the state, and the city gives us about thirty-one percent of our revenue. This is the state calculator. You know, with all the various line items, it's based on nine hundred and sixty-eight point six eight students. So, but the September thirtieth, the fall housing, or the fall count is what they, we actually ended up with in May as well, or March, March thirty-first. So the, and so what they, what they took away all the way over to the right, one, two, three, four, six lines down, they give it all back in something called no loss funding. So that's good. So with that, with, with this calculator and the, and the city's, you know, known figure, I was able to construct the budget for Fund Ten, which is here. The next slide. And the next one down. Okay. Okay, so there's the ADM. Guess I got a little ahead of myself. There's the ADM, and then the state funding. I'm using the March ninth calculator because we don't have the, the final calculator yet. So it's the state funding. Federal funding, you know, we have numerous, numerous grants. So what we did was we just, we just estimate as best we can with what's going to overlap and what's unspent. And, you know, we almost throughout the entire year, almost once a month, we're approving, you know, grants as they become finalized. And then the city, we requested five million oh eighty-two, but we ended up at four million eight thirty-two thirty-seven. That is our funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So the highlights of the budget figures you're going to see here have for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Now for next year, we've got, we've added a gifted teacher, a truancy attendance clerk, assistant principal at the middle school, one coordinator of elementary ed, one coordinator of facilities, two technology specialists. A lot of, most of these people are already on the payroll, by the way. And then one band teacher, JP King, and you'll see an increase in funding to the transportation department to try and get that department stabilized. And there will be little, little to no capital improvements coming out of operating funds in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So we will be using, we'll be relying on the CARES Act funding for the, for capital expenditures. And so here it is. So last year's, the fiscal year twenty-one, the budget, the year that we're in right now, fourteen point five million in operating funds for Fund Ten, and so that goes from fourteen-five down to thirteen-four eighty-six. And so then the expense items, you know, we had to keep moving dollars around until we figured, you know, that's just about where we're going to end up. So you have to pass a balanced budget. And this thirteen-four eighty-six does not include any rollover because we anticipate no rollover funds. Okay. And the nutrition fund, it's a separate fund that actually, the bank balance actually rolls over year to year. And so we just budgeted, that, those budget projections haven't changed since March. So I think we're going to be bringing in about a million, a million dollars, and that's a little less than this year because in, in the pandemic year, our reimbursement rates went way up. Because, and so we're going to return to the national school. And the textbook fund. Just found out today that the science adoption, we will not be able to jam that into fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So that, that's okay, because this is like the tech, this is like the cafeteria fund. The dollars just roll over, and they sit in our bank account, and we'll just, we'll just make the expenditure in July. Still make it time for the school year, just not going to be able to make it in fiscal year twenty-one. So this is the, this is the overall budget, you know, with federal dollars and grants and all that kind of stuff. So it turns into nineteen point two million and nineteen point two two six eight, and then nineteen point two six eight goes out next year. So these are our internal financial statements. This is our structure. And Tammy, you could go to the next one. So what I thought I would do this year is oh, by the way, so we will, we are full, we're planning on full in-person instruction in the fall. And so our recommendation is to approve the budget as it is, and I know there were a lot of transportation dollars there, but we, we anticipate we're going to have to, you know, hire at least another three or four drivers, a supervisor, and all the buses will run full-time. So our recommend, our official recommendation is that the budget is approved as presented. And then the remaining three slides are the exact same numbers. It's just that they're in the city format. So when the city, when they need their numbers, these next slides, I will, I will send those to those. So nothing's changed. It's just that's the city format. That's how they see it. Any questions from anyone?
Any questions for Mr. Ryder in regards to the budget? Ms. Moore, if you could go back to slide thirteen. Right there. Mr. Ryder, one question. The revenue does not equal the disbursements. Here's a three-dollar difference. Is that intentional?
No, that's, that's rounding. But before we put it, actually put it into the computer, we'll, we'll correct that.
Okay. So we're looking at passing the, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. Okay, so we're looking at passing the, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. Um, at the nineteen two sixty-eight, one eighty-nine, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's it.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryder? Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion in regards to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. Adoption.
I move approval, Madam Chair.
Um, that would be a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, correct, Mr. Holt?
That is correct.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The budget is adopted.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder.
Okay. Okay, um, the next is, uh, the next presentation here are all of the salary schedules. Um, almost all of them are identical to the one that are in place right now. We just changed the dates. So that's the teacher salary schedule. Here's some administrative, here's the administrator pay schedule for twenty twenty-two. The support staff and the extended school year. And here's the substitutes and other hourly pay rates. So the extra duty supplements, these are the ones that, uh, these are the ones that are currently in place right now. With the exception of the very last two items that I added yesterday, high school credit and dual enrollment. Remember, these are annual figures. Okay, and then there's title to the grant funded extra duty supplements. They're all at the two thousand dollars each.
Mr. Ryder or Dr. Sterling, can you, I think dual enrollment is self-explanatory. Can you, um. Just elaborate on that high school credit, um, extra duty supplement, what that's intended for?
Yes, any teacher that teaches dual enrollment, each semester will receive a twenty-five hundred dollar supplement. So if they teach dual enrollment for the entire year, they will receive at the high school level a five thousand dollar supplement. The middle school, if they teach a high school credit, a verified high school credit. Such as algebra or geometry at the middle school level, they will receive a four thousand dollar supplement for the year. Two thousand dollars per semester, but those courses at the. Middle school run for the entire year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I will just add that, of course, um, this is a formality that we have to adopt. The salary scales for next year, of course, um. For the public's information, the board is constantly looking at this. This is not a. One time a year we adopt it, we don't look at salary scales again until the following year about the same time. This is always a work in progress and something we are constantly reviewing. Any questions in regards to the salary scales and extra duty supplement list? Hearing none, then do we have a motion in regards to the salary scales and extra duty supplements?
I move to approve the salary scale and extra duty supplement list as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry.
All right, thank you again for that. Um. Here we now come to the vendor selection for the bathroom project and we've been talking about this bathroom project for a long time. We've got our. Architects, mostly, mostly architects that uh, has been, they created the RFP, brought the bidders in. Did the whole bid opening and all that, and then they vetted the, the people that, um. Submitted bids and so Tammy, as we go down. So the bid results, uh, our original estimate for this project was about seven hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. But the bid came in from an A, you know, AR Chesson. Uh, for about five hundred and seventy-seven thousand two hundred and then the second bidder, Conrad Brothers came in at nine oh one five hundred. A very large disparity there, but. Um, so most, but you know, so you know, the, the, the first thing the architects saw was, you know, did somebody forget something? Or did someone else add in a bunch of stuff that shouldn't have been? So now they, they went through every, you know, the whole checklist of everything that each of these companies did and. That, that is what it is. I mean, some people just charge more and some people charge less and that's why we do the bid process. So, uh, Mosley Architects wrote us a, a recommendation letter and their recommendation is to choose AR Chesson. For five seventy-seven two hundred for the SP Morton Bathroom Refurbishment Project. So there is the purchase order two one seven seven nine for five seventy-seven two hundred. And our recommendation is to approve the purchase order. Uh, and the work will begin the day after the last day of school, so on or about June fifteenth.
When do they expect to complete the project?
Uh, I think this is about six weeks.
Will this have any interference with summer school if we do summer school?
Um, I don't believe so. I think we'll just have to have the, you know, the kids in one area, the, you know, and they'll close off the area that they're working on. Just, and then, and be, and I want the whole board to know and to be advised that uh, there'll be two. ADA compliant bathrooms for adults.
Nice. Any other questions in regards to this? Hearing none, then do we have a motion in regards to the bathroom refurbishment project, um. Awarding the, the, um. Awarding it to AR Chesson.
Madam Chair, I move we approve purchase order two one dash seven seven nine. To AR Chesson and the amount of five hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred dollars. For bathroom refurbishment at SP Morton.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder. That motion carries.
All right, thank you all. And uh, Dr. Sterling, did you want me to introduce the next speaker or were you?
I will yield the floor to you, Mr. Ryder, please.
All right, I'm on a roll. Okay, so Kyle Teague, it's pronounced Teague, is our new director of operations and facilities. And Dr. Sterling was so impressed with his presentation at Cabinet last week that. She thought it would be wise to have him speak to you all tonight because he's got, uh, he's in charge of quite a few projects. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kyle Teague right now.
All right, uh, nice to be heard by everybody here. Um. These, this is a list of various projects that we're going to be working on. Tammy, if you'd uh, please go to the first slide. The fire and intrusion alarm system, uh, the project, as you can see from the slide, it was awarded to A and E Enterprises. And various considerations were made as to when to try and do this project. Right now, it's in engineering and a set of. Blueprints has been sent over to them so that they can get all the permits pulled and everything. They'll give me an update tomorrow by end of business as to. Uh, product delivery. This is expected to tie into the next slide, Tammy, please. The bell system, this project is going to be installed June fourteenth on the last day of school because it minimizes any kind of operational interruption. So we're going to pretty much package both of these in execution together and do it around the same time. The bathroom renovation project at SPM, uh, this slide's kind of moot, we just covered that. So. There we go, modular A. There's stuff happening on this project every day. This is moving pretty quickly. Today, we just did color samples, the geotech survey that's mentioned in this slide. It's already been sent to their design and engineering team. And they're making the various considerations they have to in order to get us our certificates of occupancy and things like that, moving on. Charles Street Gym Project, um, right now, everything's cleared out. We need directions from the committee as to what this space is going to be used for. And we'll be able to determine what to do from there. That's really it there. The next three slides is a series of projects that's going on at SP Morton. This pertains to. The canopy and shades that are going to be placed over various play areas to brighten shady areas for the children. So this slide here, the next one. Uh, this is pertaining to the guidance counselor's office remodel. There's a large order coming in and. A lot of design considerations are going to take place. Things are going to be set up and that's going to be. Put up to a crowdsourced series of specifications, the next slide. And this is pretty much the same as the last, it's just in the SPM Teachers Lounge. Next. The stripping and painting of the awnings, that project began at the beginning of this week. It's ongoing, it's going to take a few days just in prep work and getting everything going, but I, I think we're going to end up with a good finished. Uh, clean look. It's looking pretty rusty up there. I don't know if you guys have seen it recently, but hang on, looks kind of bad. We're fixing that, so. That started today or, or at the beginning of this week and it's ongoing as of today and we'll be monitoring that, moving on. Power washing and armory field, we've approved that purchase order that's been sent off. And Baxter Brothers should be beginning on this fairly shortly. I asked them to also include some other areas that we. Found needed some cleaning as well, but other than that, as stated. Going on. This was originally slated to go to Baxter Brothers for simple trimming, but I've since pulled back from this. And this slide's kind of moot. Uh, it's going to be a bigger project, we found to re-landscape SP Morton as a whole. And really reimagine what the landscape should look like and how it functions. And what really best serves uh, the interest of the facility. So that's being re-envisioned right now. I've got uh, two. Rather large bids, I'm waiting on coming in and those will be presented when I have more information there, so. The office entrance of JP King, again, in operations, things moves fast. Uh, these slides are made earlier this week, so already out of date. Windsor Homes is actually out of business. Um, they're, they're leaving, they're not doing any more projects, so we have to source a different vendor for this. And uh, we're, we're currently working on that. This project pertains to making a partition. To close off the o, office area at JP King and kind of securing that area, making it a little, uh, little better for entry and. Ingress and egress. Um, so we're, we're still having to look for a contractor there and again, I'll have more data when it's available. Lastly, uh, looking at the lawn care equipment and. Various needs that are taking place at some of our facilities. Our staff doesn't really have the necessary equipment to seed, aerate and fertilize lawns. Um, a list of equipment is being submitted to finance for consideration and we'll, we'll kind of figure out from there what the best solution is long-term. And I think that's about everything I got. Any questions?
Congratulations, Mr. Teague. This is your first forum meeting. I am so proud of you.
I survived, right?
You survived. And like I said, you did such a great job in Cabinet. And I see Ms. Cop, Ms. Scott made your presentation pop.
Oh, that's nice.
Members, this is a. You know how we are, we cultivate our leaders, we throw them in on the deep end. I know he was a little nervous when I said, oh yeah, you're going to present. He was like, oh.
Yeah, a little nervous.
Say you did a great job, Madam Chair.
Yes, he, yes, you did, Mr. Teague, you did a great job. Um, I see that you have not let any dust grow underneath your feet either. You've been rather busy. So yes, thank you very much. That's, that's a lot going on and it's a lot of things I think that we don't necessarily think about. Um, that require attention within the division. I mean, who thinks about seeding and aerating and fertilizing grass? But that, that actually, when you mentioned that, I'm sitting here going, oh, you know what? I hadn't really even thought about our big plots of weeds in front of each of the schools that we mow every once in a while.
Yeah, and that's what they are. They're mostly weeds. You've got dandelions, clovers. You don't have any grass to speak of.
No, no.
No.
No, so thank you very much for that. That was, that was a lot, but thank you. It's good, it's good to see that. Areas are getting the attention that they need.
I will continue to give it all the attention it requires.
Thank you. All right, anything else for us, Mr. Ryder?
Um, no, I think that's it. Great job, Mr. Teague. Thank you for uh, for going through that presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryder. It looks like up next we have preliminary test data.
Yes, good evening, uh, everyone. I'm going to have the principals present to you the latest um, testing results and I would like to thank them upfront. Because of the hybrid versus virtual, we've been pushing to have every student come in and test. So that we can measure what their growth uh, is so that we can plan properly for next year. So I want to. Um, really commend the principals for being active, uh, following the CDC guidelines, getting. The students in the building and continuing to push to make sure that every student participates in SOL. So without further ado, we'll start off with Mr. Gilgrin, who will uh, go over his data as of now. And uh, keep in mind, testing is still going on and we will, we will conclude uh, by the end of the month in May. So uh, last day in May. So Mr. Gilgrin. You're on. Mr. Gilgrin, are you with us?
I know I saw him.
Okay, maybe Mr. Gilgram has technical difficulties. I will, I will uh, present for Mr. Gilgrin until he comes on. So Ms. Moore, if you can slide the screen down a little bit.
If you can log on, Mr. Gilgram, and log back on. And I know Dr. Carter will go real slow. Log off and log back on.
Okay, so I'll slow down. Uh, so you're looking at grade level three and as you can see, we are looking at reading. Total number of students in third grade is seventy-eight. Number of students tested is fifty-seven. We have a seventy-four percent participation rate there. Uh, over, over, overall pass rate is twenty-six percent. One percent advanced, nineteen, uh, twenty-four percent proficient. Then we have those that in the normal times, if we were uh, going for expedited retakes, they would be in this category. This would be thirty-one percent and then those that are below three fifty. Uh, at seventeen percent. For math, you see the same amount of total students. We had fifty-six. Okay, Mr. Gilgram, you said you're back. You ready to take over? I'm at math.
Can y'all hear me now?
Math in third grade, sir.
All right, can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Is that working now? All right, good. Sorry about that one. Good evening, Madam Chair. Vice Chair, School Board members and Dr. Sterling and the rest of Cabinet. Good evening. Pleasure to be with y'all this evening. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Uh, so we have covered reading and math. So far, uh, what we're looking at here in the table, uh, remember our big push was participation rates. Um, and that is our big. And that is our big push, trying to get to that 95% participation rate. So before we even look at the data, if we recall back in April, we opened up on April 20th with SOL Carnival, and then we started to prep our release flyers and get that publicity out there to all of the community. And I think we were off to a really great start with third and fourth grade with our participation rates. Currently with the third grade, and then these numbers are changing constantly. And for example, yesterday, we had 28 students in grades three, four and five that were already conducting makeups in three, four and five. So we're constantly working to communicate with the parents, making phone calls, we're doing home visits to get information out there about makeup testing, remote testing, and getting students in the building to actually test. So these numbers are ever-changing. So currently, third grade, we're about 74%. Fourth grade is about 74% participation. And the fifth grade is where we've struggled with the participation at roughly 66%. We did take the science, fifth grade science SOL test today. That data is still trickling in. I did not get a chance to look at that this afternoon, but we'll update that by end of the day tomorrow. Looking at the pass rates. One of the things we looked at is obviously the pass rate, and that's that middle column. And in the middle column, you can see that our pass rates, they do not they calculate the students that have not taken the exam currently as failures. And so these are the lowest possible numbers we can get. So as we continue to test, these overall pass rates can only go upwards at this point. And so the caveat there is we're missing 19 test takers in third grade reading. So that 26% will go up hopefully once we test those other students that we're looking to find, that's those 19. Same thing with third grade math. We're missing 21 students that we still hope to get in and push those scores up. And same thing for fourth grade reading. The only test that we will not be doing makeups or remote testing on is fifth grade Virginia Studies. We don't test remotely for the Virginia Studies or the fifth grade science. We only will be testing remotely and makeups for the fifth grade reading and math. And so hopefully those numbers will rise as well. So we've broken down the data here as percent advanced and the number of students proficient. Those scoring between 350 and 399. If this were a typical year and we were not in the pandemic, these students in that 350 to 399 category would be expediting their test. They would be doing an expedited retake. And many of the students in the 350 to 399 column would be bumping up into the proficient column following some retakes. And so we have to consider kind of where we've gone this year and where we've been. So looking at the data, we have a good solid amount of our students in the proficient and in the 350 to 399 category where the bulk of them do fall. So that is the data there. I do want to say we're continuing to make phone calls and follow up. We've still got some visits. I do want to thank my staff. I cannot thank my staff enough. We've got Mita Stratton and Dr. Phillips and really doing those phone calls day to day. We've had Ms. Copeland going out, doing home visits, knocking on doors and calling people. It's been a valuable team effort there to get the students in the building and really rocking and rolling on the test there. So moving forward, we're looking at strategies to improve some of the learning loss for next year. Our team of reading specialists, curriculum specialists, and our director of elementary ed, we've all kind of worked together here to look at how are we going to progress next year? What is the goal to close that gap for learning loss? And so as we begin next year, we've had a lot of conversations geared towards the master schedule and how we can revamp the master schedule in the building to provide for the needs of the students. And so when we really focus on the literacy component and looking at our reading scores, we're going to begin implementing word study in a small group setting, and we're going to focus on the phonemic awareness, and this is going to hopefully help close that gap. This is going to be K through three. Also, in that K through three, we're going to modify our small group times. We're going to provide more support, more targeted support for students in need in grades K three. Those are going to be valuable to us. Also, during K two, K through two, we have an additional literacy block or RAS kids that's going to help target students in K one and two and give them the extra literacy boost. And that's going to be built into the master schedule for K one and two. Also, the plan next year for mathematics, if you looked at the previous slide, mathematics for three, four and five tends to be one of our lowest areas. And so we are extending the math instructional time. So we're extending that block. The extended time will be 80 minutes of instruction in mathematics in grades three through five into next year. We also are going to do more targeted small group instruction in math, and we're going to do some deeper dives into data that are going to provide some of those targeted points for our students so that we can develop those small group instructional times as the data reveals which students need to be in those groups and so forth moving forward next year. And so that's going to be developed in our math PLCs and our grade level PLCs as we go forward next year. Also, we we've looked at the state. The VDOE has produced what we call bridged pacing guides, and the bridged pacing guides are going to be utilized by staff to really help us figure out where we've been in prior years and how we're going to address those skill sets that students have might have deficits in from prior years and tie them into our instruction for upcoming year. And so the bridged pacing guide with VDOE is kind of like it's almost like a vertical planning tool for teachers as we plan in grades K through five coming next year. So we're really excited about the opportunity to put those bridged pacing guides into play in each of our PLCs next year in each grade level. Also, in Virginia Studies next year, we're going to do something different. One of the strategies is to reduce the number of SOL tests that our fifth graders will be taking in future years. And so the what we've we're going to implement next year, we're going to have a crossover year where Virginia Studies will be taught in both fourth and fifth grade next year. And we're going to eventually move Virginia Studies completely to fourth grade in the subsequent year, in the 2022, 2023 school year. So the goal is to move Virginia Studies down to fourth grade. And so that we spread the the testing over two grade levels where fourth grade will have three SOLs at the end of the year and fifth grade will also have three SOLs at the end of the year. This has been done in a lot of places. We are also going to attempt that. So what it means for us next year is both fourth and fifth grade students will have to take the Virginia Studies course and the SOL. But the following year, just fourth grade. And so that's what we call kind of our crossover year with that one. Also, we've been working with VDOE with Dr. Peterson. Dr. Peterson's been working with our science department and our teams in PLCs. Every week on Fridays, they've been working to develop a science pacing and curriculum resources. This month, they're actually developing their pacing guides for next year. So each grade level is working to develop a set of pacing guides with the attention and the effort of the VDOE. And Mr. Walters has been inspirational, helping to lead that since he's come on with our team as well. And part of that goes ties into the last one, where we're really going to focus on hands-on investigations in the science instruction. Part of that's going to be through our adoption of the Discovery Ed curriculum resources that we're going to have with us next year. And all of the work we've done with Dr. Peterson will kind of dovetail and really help our staff be prepared for those investigations for next year. I know that was a lot, but I will take any questions you all might have at this point.
Any questions for Mr. Gilgrin?
Yes, this is Jerry in Ward six, Jerry McCreary. I was, I was just curious about math. I'm not sure how math is taught in the elementary schools, but in Franklin. But it seems to me that every decade, the way math is taught is changed throughout our country. So I didn't know if if the way the math is being taught, if that has something to do or being tested on is how that affects the scores.
And that is an excellent question, Mr. McCreary. So so mathematics instruction has changed dramatically since I was a child in school. But the real big push in recent years in elementary mathematics has been more of a hands-on conceptual model of mathematics. So we're really developing concrete skills with our hands, and then we're developing strategies that are representational as we move forward. And then we move into the abstract. So mathematics has really become more like a math lab in a lot of ways in recent years. So it is very different. It's not just go straight to the the paper and pencil and start working things out. It is giving students time to play with the tactile and hands-on items to get build the concepts that they need to then represent things mathematically. And that is a challenge too. And the way that the the state often tests these skills have varied over the years. And so with the implementation of TEI items in mathematics now, the representation of items on a test are now tested. So students have to be proficient in both in all aspects of mathematics, from the tactile to the representational to the abstract. And so they might have to shade items on a test. They might have to move or click or drag or build something on a test. Or they might just have to answer a question. So that's a very good question. And I think the way that we instruct students to prepare for that is critical to their success in high stakes testing.
Yeah, I agree. I think yeah, math being somewhat abstract, it's hard a lot of times to translate it from one means of expression to another, I believe. So especially at that age, I would think so.
Yes, sir. It takes very targeted skills and a lot of concentration and effort at times. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To comment on the level of excitement and enthusiasm at SP Morton, when you walk through there. Everybody's just pumped up and they've got smiles on their faces and they're just doing a wonderful job. So thank you for all of that, to all of you.
Yes, sir. I could not do it without that team every day. Thank you all.
If you're Virginia Studies in your transition year, are you going to like teach part of it in the fourth grade and the remaining part in the fifth grade? Or is fifth grade a review of the fourth grade?
That is a very good question, Dr. Shelton. And actually, what we will be doing is we've got to teach the entire breadth of the course in fourth grade and in fifth grade. So we have to teach it in its entirety in both grade levels next year, which will lend itself to using a little bit of vertical planning between our fourth and our fifth grade next year, which I think will be unique. It's a unique opportunity where we can all help each other a little bit. But they both have to implement that that course completely. And at the end of the school year next year, both fourth and fifth grade will be testing that SOL.
Okay, thank you.
Most welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Gilgrin? Thank you very much, Mr. Gilgrin.
All are welcome. Thank you for having me.
All right, we'll move on to Mr. Parker.
Good evening, Madam Chair Phillips and Vice Chair Holt and the entire school board team. Also to our leader, Dr. Sterling, good evening to you and to the rest of the the JPK team that's on that's on virtually tonight and the FCPS team and the Franklin community. Good evening to everyone. Tonight, I will be presenting JPK's preliminary SOL data. And again, I will say highlight and underline and put in red preliminary. Because there are a lot of things that we're doing to enhance and change the data that we have right here. I know in talking to Ms. Ms. Moore, she wanted to keep it at a limited time, so I will go through the data as presented tonight. Before I start, I would say great job to Mr. Gilgrin, who's new aboard on the for principal on the principal team. So great job with your your presentation as well. All right, for us, reading. As I said before, we want to make sure we get as many students in as possible. The students that we have in reading six and math six, we have 68 students that we are going after to make sure that we are attendance for for testing reaches that 95%. Of course, we're shooting for 100%, obviously. Again, we will need to update this because we have been making up ever since Wednesday, Wednesday and Thursday of this week, doing makeup tests. So we've had a number of students come in. But this 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 slide had to be in by Tuesday, Tuesday end of day. So we will have to update this slide as well. Moving on, we have 68 in reading. We have 55 of those students who have come in to test at this point when we presented this to Dr. Carter, eight, which is 81%. We were 21 overall pass rate, 21 from 55, which is 47%. And as everyone knows, our reading, we're in a we're 86%. And math, we're sitting at 80, 87% in English, which is reading and writing for the school. We are sitting at 84%. So when we look at these pass rates, there are a lot of things that we're going to, we're going to do to make sure that we we continue to, our goal is to at least be between 70 and 80% during this pandemic. So when you look at 47% out of 26 out of 55, 47% pass advance, which was which is 400, which is 500 to 600, we have one of our students, which is 2%. 25 were into proficient range, which is 400 to 500. And then that's 16, that's 16 between that 350. And I stated earlier tonight, when you look at that, that that category, those students will all, they always expedite. So those are our students that will expedite and get another chance to take the test. So what we have done as a team, we have looked at if those students were able to expedite. So those students were able to expedite and going back looking at our data, because data doesn't lie. When we expedite our students, almost 90% of our students pass. So if you would combine the overall pass rate with that 16 with reading, you're looking at 42 over 55, which would give us 76% if we were expediting in reading. We had three 13 students score below 350, which those students will be growth students for the next year. What we mean by growth when we do the calculation, a student with growth, he's calculated two over one. That means with that kid's scores, a certain range for the very next year on his scale set from VDOE. That student will be awarded extra point. So that means that the school is awarded an extra point as well. That was implemented, I want to say, two years ago. Because one thing the state said, you know, every kid, you know, has the ability to pass, but for those who don't have, that don't pass, everyone can grow. So that growth chart was put in place by VDOE. And and we figured out the formula for that growth chart as well. So when we go to math, we're 49 out of 68, which is 72%, eight out of 49, which in math, as everyone knows, we in sixth grade, we have math six, and we also have our redesign program. Thanks to our our leader, Dr. Sterling, our redesign program where we have three math six classes, and we also have an advanced math, which is pre-algebra in sixth grade for that math track. So all of those students are in that eight out of 49. But when you come over to the 350 range, you add those two, and if we were saying 33 out of 49, we're looking at 67% during a pandemic. A lot of those students haven't had the opportunity to physically come in and they've been virtual with the pandemic and and the score would be 67% if we were able to expedite. 16 of those students scored below 350. Reading in seventh grade, 80 students, we have at this time, that time, we had 60 to come in, which is 75%. And 36 out of the 60, which is 60. And thirty-six out of the sixty, which is sixty percent. Two were advanced, thirty-four passed proficient, fourteen was between three fifty and three ninety-nine. And when you add that, that would be fifty over sixty, which is eighty-three percent possibility for us, even with these kids. Well, we've had a lot of kids come in since this test. This test, this data is strictly from the first week of testing, which was March the eleventh, was reading. I mean, May the eleventh, I'm sorry, May the eleventh was reading and May the thirteenth was math. So during that time, all this week, we've had a lot of kids come in to help to test. Some of the kids that we thought were gonna be remote that refused to come in or said no, they have come in to test. So thank you to the administrative team. Thank you to everybody at JPK. Thank you to Mr. Lowe going out, making the home visits, Ms. Carr, Ms. Porter. I hate to start asking names, saying names, but Mr. Chrome, Ms. Koppich, Ms. Singleton. Everybody has reached out and jumped on board and trying to get as many kids. And Ms. Lawrence has come back into the building as well. She is, she's making phone calls and, and talking to parents. Our new assistant principal who started this week, Mr. O'Neil, he's getting his feet wet, jumped right in and he's making phone calls. So as a team, we're rolling, trying to get as many students into test as possible. Math, seventh grade, that's your pre-algebra and your Algebra One students, which we're sitting at sixteen out of fifty-one, which is thirty-one percent. But if you combine the two, the twenty-one and the sixteen, you're looking at thirty-seven, fifty-one, which is seventy-three percent. And as we all know, true accreditation in math is seventy percent pass rate. In reading eight, we have fifty-seven out of our eighty, which is seventy-one percent. Twenty-seven out of fifty-seven, which is forty-seven percent. And then you have your twenty-one out of fifty-seven, forty-three, fifty to three ninety. And if you put those, you got us forty-eight out of fifty-seven, which is eighty-four percent. If we have nine students out of fifty-seven, which will be possibly growth, growth, growth kids for the, for the next year. And math, math eight, which where all of our, all of our eighth graders are taking either Algebra One or they're taking geometry, both high school classes and of course classes year long. So those will be high, those will be high school credits that they would take over to the high school as well. And nine out of forty-three is twenty-one percent, nine out of, but if you add that twenty-nine, you're looking at thirty-eight over forty-three, which is seventy-two percent. So I say all that, you can go to the next slide, Ms. Moore. Our remote students, we only have fourteen remote students. And as you heard me say before, when we count as remote students are those students who have, parents who have said, no, we're definitely not coming in. And out of those fourteen, I think we've had maybe one or two of those to even come in. So as of right now, we're sitting at a hundred and ninety kids that have come into tests over two fourteen. And that percentage right now, as far as attendance, we're looking at eighty-nine percent. Still short falling six, six percentage points of the ninety-five. But we're steadily working at, again, we still have to update some things because some kids came in on yesterday and some kids came in today to test. So, so we're moving well with that. You can just move, go to the next slide, Ms. Moore. Now, our strategies for improvement for the, for the learning laws. As you heard me mention at the work session, the hybrid and virtual spiral back acceleration program. Because as you all, we all know, remediation is a bad word around here. We all celebrate our kids. We are always accelerating our kids. So since we have our kids and we have the data with us right now from our SOL tests, what we are doing as an administrative team along with our teachers, we are analyzing and disaggregating that data that has come in from the SOL test. We're looking at the strands that our students have a weekend or week are in and we're addressing those. So we're starting summer school actually on Monday. And that's why we call it our spiral back acceleration program. And what we will be doing, we will go in, we will look at the strands that we need to address. And the reason we're starting right now, the last three weeks of school, is because instead of hoping Johnny come to summer school, we already have Johnny in school. So while we have Johnny in school, let's, let's do everything we can to accelerate Johnny these three weeks. And if he comes during the summer, that's great. But while we have him in our possession, we're gonna do everything we can to accelerate and move Johnny, Suzie and everybody, everybody else. That will be held grades to grade six to eight. Our focus is gonna be for the next three weeks on math and reading in all areas. Our focus is gonna be on math and reading and we're definitely focused on our exceptional ed students. We're almost at a hundred percent with our exceptional ed students coming in to test. So that's a great thing. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to focus on every child. Because when you only have two twenty-four and you have to focus on everyone to make sure that they all are successful. Summer school acceleration program will feed right off of our pre, our spiral back acceleration program, where we are inviting all of our students. Because truth be told, with, with the pandemic, all of our students have suffered a little bit. Our advanced students, we've seen a drop in some of our advanced scores. So we wanna, if possible, we wanna get as many of our students in summer school as possible so we can continue and kick off next year and move forward, move forward from this pandemic and get back in the eighties because always we are heading to the blue. And we're serious about heading, heading to the blue. Summer school will run from July the sixth to July the thirtieth, from eight AM to twelve PM. A lot of our teachers that are teaching during the regular day are teaching our students during summer school. And I think that's big because they get an opportunity, especially for the fifth graders coming over to the sixth grade, they'd get the opportunity to form that relationship with them and learn the JPK way. So, and that's all around, that's for the, the whole child, learning the JPK way of how we do things and how we continue to move students forward. That will run from Monday through Thursday. That will run Monday through Thursday from eight AM to twelve PM. So we have a lot going on. We, we are, we are in uncharted waters right now, but we know exactly what to do to get out of those waters. And, and it's gonna take a lot of hard work, it's gonna take. We have a Parents as Partners coming up next Thursday, where we're gonna have a virtual meeting with our parents. And we're gonna discuss data. We're not gonna discuss kids, but we're gonna discuss data and let our parents know that, you know, their partnership is just as important as our partnership. Well, then we need them as much as they need us. And at the end of the day, we're gonna do everything we can to make sure our babies are, are successful. So with all that being said, do you have any questions for, for me in regards to JPK SOL data?
Any questions for Mr. Parker?
And again, we're heading to the blue and we're serious about it. We're heading to the blue. We've been accredited, we've all green, we've done all that. We're headed to the blue. We're headed to uncharted waters for Franklin City. So we, we love to, you know, bring everybody along with us, but we are serious about heading to the blue. And you know, if you, if you get a chance, come visit us. And if you see a whole lot of numbers floating around, it's because we're throwing data everywhere because we're getting as many of our kids in there, looking at that data and moving forward with the data to make sure that they are successful. So, so thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for our leadership with Dr. Sterling, Dr. Carter assisting us as well, obviously Ms. Burhalter. Just thank everybody for everything, but we're gonna keep the main thing, the main thing. And the main thing are our babies and moving our babies forward.
Excellent.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Parker?
Excellent job.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
All right.
Not easy having all of those high school credits over there and still moving those kids forward. So thank you so much for that.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Great to be with you. Good job, Mr. Gilgrin. Good job, Mr. Parker. We'll dive right into Franklin High School's data as of May the eighteenth. We have been testing heavily yesterday and today. So we definitely need to update our data as well. But as of May the eighteenth, this is where we were Tuesday afternoon. You know, at the high school, we're subject-based instead of grade-level based. So ours looks a little bit different. Let's talk about English first. The state accreditation benchmark is seventy-five percent. Our, our in-house goal is ninety-five percent. And right now, well, no, not right now because we've had two days of testing. But on May the eighteenth, we were at, at an overall pass rate of seventy-five percent. That's reading and writing combined. And you can see the two numbers there, add together, gives you the eighty-eight out of one eighteen. One thing we're very proud of and, and all of our subjects as of May the eighteenth, we had a hundred percent participation rate. Every single student, virtual, in-person, all of them had, had taken both the reading and the writing SOL. You know, we don't have a hundred and eighteen students in English eleven, but they, all of them tested twice. So that's really what fifty-nine times, fifty-nine students, because they took two tests. The number that we had in the, in the proficient category was eighty, was seventy-four percent, eighty-seven students or eighty-seven passing scores, because reading and writing. We had one advanced above five hundred. We had fourteen in the three fifty to three ninety-nine range. And we have sixteen below three fifty. So as of May eighteenth, that's where we were with English. Moving on to math, and I will say, let me say one more thing about English before we move on. We had an awesome day today. We had twenty-six out of thirty students pass English eleven reading on the first attempt. So we, we need four more to have a hundred percent. Two of them didn't show up today, so they're coming tomorrow. And the other two are in the expedited range. And we are expedited retaking because we're, you know, we're trying to get verified credits for graduation. So I'm twenty-six out of thirty today. So actually that brings us up to seventy-eight percent pass rate for English. Just want to throw that out there for the English team, Ms. Townsend, Mr. Manley and Mr. McKeller, one of our new exceptional education teachers. And Ms. Benton had a lot to do with that data too, who's now at JP King. All right, math, math, the state accreditation benchmark is seventy percent. Franklin High School's goal was eighty percent. Right, as of May the eighteenth, we have a fifty-six percent pass rate overall for math. Algebra one is fifty-five percent. Geometry, that, that's a little skewed to say zero percent because it was just one student that took the geometry SOL as of May eighteenth. Algebra two had the students passed. All of our VAT scores, and this is preliminary because it's not official yet. Well, all the, all of this preliminary, SOL and VAT. But our special education students that are in Mr. Manley's program, our self-contained students, preliminarily all their VATS passed. So we're proud of that. Every math student that we have, that we had first semester, because we're in the second semester testing now, took the math assessments, took their math assessment. So forty-eight out of forty-eight was the participation rate. Twenty-seven students, fifty-six percent were proficient, none were advanced. Eighteen were between three fifty and three ninety-nine and three below three fifty. And just to be totally transparent, our math data didn't, has not come back in as good as our English data so far. Because I don't want to just give you the good news about the bad news. But we're gonna continue to work. We have a lot of expedited retakers. And we're gonna continue to push hard for, for math. Science, the state accreditation benchmark is seventy percent. Our goal in-house is eighty-five percent. Overall, science is, or was on May eighteenth, sixty-two percent pass rate. That's forty, was, it was forty-three out of sixty-nine. Earth science was leading biology going into these two days, but I've got some good news coming up. Earth science was sixty-seven percent. As of Tuesday, biology forty-three percent. Chemistry, one student out of one passed and all of our VATS passed. After today's testing, the good news is biology is now up to fifty-seven percent pass rate. The bad news is earth science is down to sixty percent. So we kind of went up in biology, went down in earth science. But so overall, science is about a sixty percent pass rate with several students that need to make up the SOL and also some expedited retakers coming up. History, you only have to have one verified credit for history to graduate. Most, most students get that from World History One. So our data is very skewed towards World History. We still teach US history and World History Two, but very few of those students have to take the SOL test because they've already passed World One or they've received a local verified credit. But one thing we're definitely gonna focus on next year, and we'll, we'll have a, you know, a, a little shakeup with staff there. We've got to raise that, that pass rate in World One. Fifty, fifteen out of thirty-seven passed. As of May the eighteenth, that's forty-one percent. But we had a hundred percent participation rate in history, just like we did in science. Nineteen were proficient, forty-four percent, two were advanced. And actually, we had a perfect score in World History One first semester. So congratulations to that young man. I think it's okay to say his name is Hunter Patterson. Congratulations. He had a six hundred. His name's already on our perfect six hundred score plaque in the hallway. So he's one of those two advanced. The other one, Ms. Phillips, might know her. And then, then our, our students between three fifty and three ninety-nine is fourteen and scoring below three fifty-seven. But history is definitely an area that we have got to address just as strongly as we're addressing math and CTE because we've fallen off a little bit in history lately. All right. Our strategies to address learning loss. We're gonna reteach a lot of these standards in four-credit summer school and in summer SOL Academy because a lot of our students missed. They missed the time that it was being taught the first time because of our attendance or they just didn't get it the first time. So we're gonna reteach it in a, in a different way. We're gonna use our SDBQ data, since we do have a hundred percent, a hundred percent participation rate. We do have SDBQ data on every student so far. And, and, and we plan to have a hundred percent by the end of the year, since we're testing second semester right now. So we can use that data for summer SOL Academy. Instead of just giving everybody the same thing, we can use each individual student's SDBQ data for remediation and reassessing and, and also for acceleration. Pre, we're gonna have, we need to do a pre-test at the beginning of the school year to determine gaps in learning and where each individual student needs to start in the fall. Not everyone is gonna be at the same place. Some of our Algebra Two students are gonna still need to be re-taught some, some standards from Algebra One. Some of our World History Two students may not have gotten everything from World One. So we need to do a pre-test at the beginning of the school year to, to see our gaps and to plan based on those gaps. We need to spiral back to teach standards that should have been learned in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and not using the pandemic as an excuse. But it's the reality that we need to spiral back and teach standards that should have been learned and move forward with new material at the same time for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And there, there's an art in that spiraling back and moving forward at the same time. And we, in my opinion, we need professional development on how to address learning loss, close achievement gaps and accelerate students forward, all in the same class and all at the same time. Because that is a lot for a teacher. We, we've always worked on differentiation of instruction, but now it's even more critical with our students at different places. We don't want to hold our students back that are ready to go forward. But at the same time, we have some students that did not learn what they would have learned in a normal year. And we've got achievement gaps with our special education students, our economically disadvantaged, our black students. We need to close those achievement gaps, move forward, address learning loss all at the same time. If there's a PD out there for that, we want to sign up for it. Any questions for me? And thank you for your attention.
Any questions for Mr. Phelps?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I don't want Mr. Phelps to leave because he's gonna help me present on the next presentation. But board members, this was something that Mr. Ryder had mentioned when he said, oh, there's this pile of money for learning loss. This is exactly what it's for. What Mr. Phelps touched on, professional development, closing the achievement gaps, addressing learning loss while we're accelerating. And you're exactly right. That's a lot to put on a teacher's plate to say, just do it, when you've never really had that skill set. So thank you for, for mentioning that because that definitely is going into our planning to support our teachers and we'll get their feedback on how that will look as well.
Dr. Sterling, before you proceed, can I just say thank you very much to Dr. Carter as well for guiding us through that presentation?
Yes.
So thank you very much, Mr. Carter. Dr. Carter, excuse me.
I have a question for Dr. Carter or for whoever can best answer this.
Or whoever can best answer this question. Um, I'm trying to understand, I I obviously COVID, you know, the students not being in class has a a great effect on on their learning and test scores, but um, I guess it's Virginia, they have a standard of learning. It's not the same as the Common Core push. Is that correct or?
The standards of learning and and Common Core are two different tests that are and that are given by different by different states. Some, the the SOL is uh, tailored to the Commonwealth of Virginia. I'm answering your question, Mr. McCurry.
Yeah, well, that that's that, yeah, that kind of practice is what I want to say because I'm not, I'm trying to understand how the test, does the testing. My perception is that teachers are kind of forced more to care their their teaching to to the to a test more than. I don't know. I almost feel like maybe our teachers are hamstrung somewhat. If they have to teach to a standardized test. And whether, you know, on the like math in particular, uh, I know what else coming up, you know, the the new math, so to speak, was, as I mentioned earlier, was was a was a big problem. You know, if 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 parents, for example, like with Common Core, I know that was a big problem with with parents being frustrated where they could not help their their children study. So I'm wondering, I was wondering how the Virginia standards of learning, does it affect how parents are able to help their their children at home? Understand the material. You know, where they can assist it. It's not everything is pushed on the to the the teachers, you know, you want the parents to be able to help them as well. But if they have a quote new way of of studying math, for example, I would think parents are hamstrung themselves. So I was just wanting to get your opinion on that, if that's an accurate perception on my part.
You want Dr. Carter's opinion? Go ahead, Dr. Carter. Because I have my, I want to give you my opinion as well.
Okay.
Well, yes, Ms. McCurry, you 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 bring up a very good point of how do you be able to support your 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 students? And so that is, that is definitely a strategy that we can look at to um, get parents involved in how they can support uh, in preparation for the test. The, yes, I understand when you said they're they're hamstrung, but we have to have some type of way to measure achievement and growth. And so it so nowhere where there's the Common Core or the SOL, it's a perfect system. But we have to, but but this is the best that the states have come up with to measure the growth of the growth of students and how much they have they have learned. Um, so each district has to take a look at, you know, how we can get parents involved to help prepare uh, for for the test because that that is the measuring tool for growth, for learning that we have. Dr. Sterling, you want to, you want to throw your perspective on it?
Yes, please. Um, when you're looking at um, working with the parents and you're exactly right, I have been very pleased to coming from two different school systems to Virginia. I have been very pleased to know that the VDOE does an exceptional job with having parent resources on our website, on their website. And then we actually take those resources to train our parents during Parents as Partners or Parent Reading Night or Parent Math Night, whatever the case may be. So there's a lot of information that we provide our parents to support them with that new math. And you're exactly right. Um, we did, you know, remote well, you know, memorization, uh, what do you call it, multiplication? Now the kids are given different three numbers and they're learning how to uh, multiply just using those three numbers. So we are constantly professionally developing ourselves and we give those resources to our parents as well. But Ms. McCurry, I want to also say that we have an excellent curriculum that is outlined with the VDOE, the Virginia Department of Education, and they provide us the blueprint to help us um, educate our children. And one of the things that I've noticed uh, and maybe one of the principals might want to comment on this because this is a really good discussion is that our children really understand the content. That, I mean, they know the content. But they were very limited on test-taking strategies. So when you say teaching to the test, they are teaching test-taking strategies so the students can recognize what the content really is. And that's that critical thinking part. These.
Thank you.
Any.
You know, I I I'm offer a little a a different perspective as a parent. Um, the SOLs on a given subject outline outline what the expectation is to be taught on that subject and and the points you have to hit. That's what that SOL is doing. So when the curriculum um, is aligned with what's being taught on the SOL, then the the teacher's lesson plans and the curriculum that they're teaching to the students hits on those bullet points of what the VDOE is saying needs to be taught to the child within the subject. From the parent perspective, have I always been able to help my child with everything? Um, no, because a lot of times it has been like an episode of are you smarter than a fifth grader? And even though I might have learned it in school, I am no ways near even close to being good at it. I am very thankful right now that my current ninth grader does not have an SOL um, in pre-calculus because there is no way I'd be able to help her with it, even though I took it myself. Um, but I I remind my child through this process and and this is where the parent part comes in for me that you 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 take it step by step and digest it step by step. Um, because that's what the curriculum is doing. That's what the teacher is doing is they're stepping them step by step through each part to get to the end result. Um, and and that's how me i- in my position from the parent perspective, that's how I've been able to help my child. And it is, and and no parent, you know, I I'm sure if I had to sit down and talk physics um, with my child, if she took physics in high school, there's no way I'd be, I I'd have to go through the class with her because there's no way I'd be able to teach her um, or help her through that. But it's it's helping and the strategies, like Dr. Sterling said, the um, the strategies that come into play. You know, I remember when my children were in L in middle school, starting in middle school, the um, the dumping, how they teach them to um, dump the trash. You know, you automatically go through the four and you you know what, which one is automatically going to be the wrong answer and and you know which one is, which two maybe are your two options? And then from there, you narrow it down. Um, dumping down, I remember them talking about dumping down all the time. Mr. Parker, knock your head. You know what I'm talking about? So you know, the listening to them with their strategies is how I help them learn to take the test and not emphasize that it's just a make or break.
If I, if I could add, um, Mr. McCurry, I think one of the biggest things that I I I know all three schools do, um, especially with math. Um, we stress the fundamentals in math. Um, so yes, we, uh, there is a test called the SOL that we have to take. Uh, but at the same time, uh, there are things that we are doing within the school. Um, aside from the strands that are on the blueprint um, to make sure that we're covering the fundamentals. So when we have kids leaving the elementary school, uh, going into pre-algebra and we have kids leaving the um, middle school, entering the high school into algebra two. And all of those uh, areas and then of course at the high school, they're taking the pre-cow and all of that. Um, there's no way that will be possible uh, if all three schools weren't, were not concentrating on the fundamentals of of math. So I think that one of the big things that that we do collaboratively uh, with all three schools, uh, all three principals talk, you know, um, and then we sat down as a whole administrative team with central office uh, to make sure that, you know, even though it's not on the blueprint or it's not being tested, that does not mean we don't cover it. Um, so uh, that goes on and like Ms. Phillips said, the brain dumping at the uh, at the middle school, we we found that that's big. What is brain dumping? Soon as our kids get in the SOL type and the SOL uh, class test site uh, wants to test, uh, the examiner says, you know, you can start testing. Brain dump everything you know about this math test, this algebra test, put it on paper, just start writing. Uh, and we found that to be very successful. Uh, we've also found, uh, speaking at the middle school, justifying your answers, justifying your answers with reading, justifying your answers with math. Your test will not be graded during the regular school year if you don't justify. Uh, because you can put any number or any answer on a paper, uh, but we want to know the why. Why did you choose that one? Uh, how did you come up with this answer in math? So in order for your paper to be graded, um, you have to justify and in justifying your answers. Uh, if the answer is wrong, then that leads to uh, us correcting you in the classroom, going through. Uh, but just practicing those behavior and many other strategies, but those two uh, we definitely stress the brain dumping and justifying your answers, not just putting the answers down. You have to tell me why you chose that answer or how you came up with that answer in math. Um, but to also answer your question, we're still, all three schools, I know are 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 because the data says it because of what we're doing in all three schools that we're concentrating on the fundamentals as well. Hopefully that answers your question.
To know, I I know math, to me, math is one of those things that people uh, have different ways of learning and understanding. And uh, I have a relative, when he was little, he we asked him because he was five years old. We were like, how do you know the number? He's like, I don't know. I just see it go by my mind. You know, so they asked him to explain why he knows the answer. He couldn't tell you. So he would be very frustrated to uh, want to take in the test, but you know, so. Thank you. I appreciate y'all's answer. This encouraging that you're going um, not just beyond the test, but you're I I'm really encouraged that the school, all three schools are working together, that that was a recent conversation and uh, being the new board member, I'm still trying to understand all the uh, dynamics of the of the three schools. I appreciate your answers. Explanations.
All right, Madam Chair.
I think we can hop back to your superintendent's review, Dr. Sterling.
All right, excellent. I would like to have uh, present the superintendent's report. But I'd like to share this spotlight with my high school principal, Mr. Phelps. Are you still with us?
Yes, ma'am. I wouldn't miss this part.
I think you know somebody in this picture too. If you could take this away and also if you can add a little bit about what your predictions might be for the numbers for next year.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we're very proud of these six students that graduated from Camp Community College last Friday, May fourteenth. And they all graduated, if you can see that little gold medal they're wearing, which I took back because we're we're going to give it to them again on June fourth. Uh, but they all graduated with honors from Camp Community College. Um, because of their GPA and and their achievements. So we're they they received their associate's degree in general studies. Uh, and we also have two additional students that that earned their passports in addition to these two, these six students. So we have two students um, that didn't get the associate's degree, but they still earned the passport, which is um, pretty much your freshman year of classes that can transfer um, to most four-year colleges in Virginia. Well, probably any outside of Virginia too, but definitely in Virginia. All right, so we got from left to right, Mr. Jemaj Jay Badham, Ms. Elizabeth Cranger, Ms. Kayla Phelps, Ms. Zaya Smith, Ms. Janay Evans, and Mr. Richard Meads. And our prediction for next year, since Dr. Sterling put me on the spot, is we're going to, we're going to double this amount. Um, and and keep in mind, last year we had one student, which we who were very proud of Kimon Rogers. We have one student get his one-year certificate. We didn't have any getting associate's degree. So this year we went from one with a one-year certificate to six with an associate's degree and two passports. And we're on um, track to at least double it for next year, the number of students getting an associate's degree. Um, so we're very proud of 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 all of our students and especially these six for what they did last last Friday graduating from camp. And yeah, before we move on, um, that this this happened. A big part of why this happened is because of our superintendent and school board paying for a good part of the tuition and us all advocating for some of these students to get into these classes to begin with, um, because, you know, i- i- it was a push to get some of these students to be able to take dual enrollment classes and um, and when you give our kids the opportunity, this is what happens in the end. We got six students here standing with a a cap and gown on from Camp Community College and honor graduates.
Wow. Any questions?
Absolutely amazing. Congratulations to all six of them. I I am quickly learning. Um, because I have one that's, I have two that started college classes this year, one at the high school level doing dual enrollment and one at the actual collegiate level. This is not an easy task. College classes are not, um, are not made any easier just because you're in high school. It is the same rigor that they would have if they were actually in a college class. So congratulations to all six of them.
Yes, and I just want to thank again, thank you Travis. Don't leave because you got one more. Um, and also thank the school board. I mean, it was really the support of the school board and recommendation. The recommendation doesn't come from me. It came from Mr. Phelps and his team and push, push, push. And we've got it done to open up and pay for those classes. So we greatly appreciate that. But it is something to see that we're going to continue this trajectory. But it also started again uh, with that redesign for the additional students coming through uh, with Mr. Parker's team, working with those high school credits at that middle school has allowed our associate degree program to flourish through Vanguard, through Passport, even working with um, upward bounds, you name it. We are really opening up the doors for our children as well as with CTE. So we're working on making certain our children not only have their uh, associates, but also have uh, multiple opportunities to get uh, licenses in a career field. And that's important as well, those CTE credits. All right, we're going to move on. Mr. Phelps, once again, I mean, I know this is my report, but while I have you, go ahead on.
Oh, my goodness. Uh, this is a, um, well, first of all, this is a Franklin City Public Schools award as far as I'm concerned because it's taken the whole team and 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 please don't feel like that we think that we have arrived because we got this because we have a lot of areas of growth still at Franklin High School. I mean, I can call them out right now, CTE, math, history. And we we can always get better, but I think the title of this award kind of says it. Um, we are continuing, we are continuously improving at Franklin High School. It doesn't mean we can't grow even more. Um, but I I do think this validates our hard work. And when I say our, I'm not just talking about Franklin High School staff. I'm talking about central office, JP King, SP Morton, the community, uh, the school board, the city council. Everybody has to be moving in the same direction for us to be able to um, to 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 get something like the continuous improvement award from the Virginia Department of Education, which simply means that our data three years ago, um, our data now is better than our data was three years ago. And so 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 we're growing and and we're moving to like Coach Parker talks about um, heading to the blue. Um, we're trying to get to all green first and then and 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 then then maybe we can get to the blue. But I I do appreciate this um, this recognition, but I don't want it to seem like it's just a Franklin High Award. I think it's, in my opinion, it's a Franklin City Public Schools Award.
Yes, and I think the title definitely sums up the work that we're doing, continuously improving. Even when we reach our mark, we're always going to be continuously improving. So congratulations and thank you. And congratulations again to the entire school district because this is what we do, continuously moving forward to get better. All right, look at these happy faces. Appomattox Regional Governor. All right, look at these happy faces. Appomattox Regional Governor's School has accepted two of our students for the 2122 school year. If you could scroll up a little bit. All right, I think everyone knows that, these names, Aeneas Leonard, congratulations on getting accepted to Appomattox Regional Governor's School, and Anaya Vaughn. We're so pleased that we have two students selected again, embracing the opportunities that are out there and getting accepted to schools that specialize in the, the fine arts, math, dual enrollment, all of that that they want to pursue. They actually applied and got accepted, so congratulations to them. I'm sure their parents are very proud as we are. Oh, boy, look at these shiny faces. Last year and a year before, I think we may have had one student accepted, but Ms. Ricks, are you still with us?
Yes.
Isn't that an innocent picture that I see? Ms. Ricks, she is our gifted director along with Ms. Sherlock, and we'll still have Ms. Gary on board with us, but I just cannot say enough of how much that she has developed this gifted program. And this year we have a lot to be excited about. So Ms. Ricks, if you can please, and I want, and after this, can you please touch on your physics program, summer program for the summer with the bush gardens and all of that?
Sure. Good evening, team, tonight. Just briefly, I am excited about our four students here that have been accepted to the Tidewater Regional Governor's School for Science and Technology. We know that last year they shut down due to the pandemic and most kids in our surrounding areas could not have, did not have a laptop, even though we were ready to go and our students were ready with their hotspots and laptops, but it was on hold. But the students submitted their applications and six, and only 60 students are selected throughout the regions. And however, four of our, our students were selected. They put in the hard work and dedication at the elementary school. So I am so excited that we are really moving forward with our, we know we have our multiple enrichments at the middle school and our multiple enrichments at the high school, but we are really moving forward with our students at the elementary school. So I am excited about that and the parents was extremely excited, happy over the phone to just to know that their student have this opportunity. So we are thankful, grateful again that these students will be, be participate in a two-week summer program enrichment with other students across the, um, the, the region. So again, congratulations to all four of those students. Also, we are excited because last year, again, okay, yes.
Read their names.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, can we scroll down a little bit so I can see the names?
There you go.
I'm sorry. We have here, Anana Henry, we have Sharad Perry, we have Noah Sterling, and we also have Brooklyn Rose. So again, to our students, congratulations. Okay. Also, last year we received from the Virginia Gifted Association a grant because we submitted a project with our elementary students for Exploring Physics Day. We wanted to basically get them to be a roll, they wanted to be a roller coasters and go to the amusement park during Physics Day and also participate in a coding of an amusement park. So we have that available and we will have that running this summer from July the 6th to July the 16th. Again, this will be housed at SP Morton Elementary School. And again, we have 14 students that, that will qualify for that program. So we have sent those applications out and we're getting parents to respond. And we excited that we're gonna have that program housed right at our elementary school. So Mr. Gilgrin is on board with that and also our new gifted teacher who is excited will be coming in July 1, Ms. Gary and Ms. Sherlock. So we all working together as a team to ensure our students are successful and continuing to build in those STEM projects, which we did a lot of that virtually as well with our elementary students. So we are definitely moving forward with our elementary students. Thank you and thank you, Dr. Sterling, for the opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, I cannot thank you enough to have our elementary school students actually coding their own roller coasters and amusement parks. I mean, that, and I live at the amusement parks in the summer, but to actually have my child understand the mechanics and the physics behind it because of your leadership, it speaks volumes to the exposure that our children will have at SP Morton. And again, keep, keep doing what you're doing. Absolutely amazing with leading your team. Great job.
Thank you.
Board members? Okay. All right. If there are no questions, I would like to present Franklin City Public Schools Teacher of the Year Award. This year, whereas all Franklin City School public, excuse me, where all Franklin City Public School teachers have gone above and beyond this year and whereas during the difficult times of COVID-19 pandemic, Franklin City Public Schools teachers quickly adapted to virtual and hybrid teaching. And whereas all Franklin City Public School teachers have excelled in both virtual and in-person teaching and whereas all Franklin City Public School teachers have demonstrated outstanding dedication to Franklin students and helped ensure that they achieved to their highest potential. And whereas the Franklin City Public School Superintendent and School Board celebrate and recognize each Franklin City Public School teacher for accelerating Franklin forward. Every teacher in the school division has been named Teacher of the Year for the 2020, for the 2020, 21 school year. We want to say a big crack, congratulations to every teacher.
Yeah.
Have a five.
Yes.
Each teacher will see, will receive this document along with a personal note commending them for rising to the occasion. And we just didn't single out one. It was everyone that gave an all-in effort and every teacher deserves to be recognized this year.
Yes, congratulations to all the teachers within the division. You know, this is, this has been a very challenging. Now we're into 14 months, um, where, since we've been thrown into the doors of the building closed. And each and every one of the, of you teachers within this division have stepped forward in your own way. You've had teachers that are maybe not technically savvy that have still given it their all and have learned to adapt. You have teachers that are extremely savvy with what they do and not only have they embraced the technology side of this virtual experience, but they have also helped bring others along with them. You have teachers that have gone above and beyond, reaching out to students, helping after hours, the long hours that the teachers have put in. We, you know, we talk about in a, in a traditional year, how long a school day a teacher pulls. And they, you know, I know teachers that have hopped on Zoom meetings with students at seven, eight, nine o'clock at night just to help them along and students that aren't even their student. Um, so to each and every one of you, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do every single day and congratulations, each and every one of you so deserve this.
All right, Madam Chair, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sterling. Next up is business by school board members. Does anyone have anything to share with the board?
We have a big meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock. I'm sure you were gonna bring that one up.
Oh, absolutely. Underneath eight point two, we absolutely were. Anything else? I will add in circling back. Yesterday was the HRET A meeting and it was essentially just their big going over formalities for the year. They did discuss Virtual Virginia. They're really, it was their annual look at Virtual Virginia and they beefed that up some. That was really the big topic of the day. Beyond that, there was an ARGGS board meeting last week, but unfortunately I was not able to attend. And I have not heard an update on that. I know the proposal from the interim executive director was that ARGGS was going to be fully in person in the fall, was the proposal. And if a student was not able to attend in person due to an extenuating circumstance, like for instance, if they had a health condition to where it was not conducive for them to be in person, then they, there's a process that they're going to go through. And there's some, some other things that they were looking at, so I'll be interested to see how that comes out once that information is shared. Um, the only other thing that I had at our, at our work session, we've received, um, communication from the SBA that it is the time of year where they look at board recognition awards. Those three are Board of Distinction, School Board of the Year, and School Board Member of the Year. And I had pushed out to board members to take a look at those. School, the Board of Distinction, we as a board looked at that a few years back and that actually requires each board member, all board members, to attend certain events throughout the year, like the school, the annual convention, the, cat, it's one of the legislative ones. I think it's the, um, the one in January, the, and I can't remember what that one is right now, going through board orientation. Going on to, I think, the, the Conference on Education. All board members would have to attend that. So we decided not to look at that. And then the next one would be School Board of the Year. I did a little research on that one. That does require that all board members must achieve the Award of Honor, which would require 32 VSB A credits. I think it was 32. So that would mean several items, several events that each board member would have to attend. And that would be for two years in a row. So those two right there, we do not meet the qualifications for those. School Board Member of the Year would be a board member on our board or any board that has achieved the level of the Award of Honor. And would, could be nominated by either the superintendent or by the board with unanimous consent from the board itself. I think we've probably got a few here because we all attended the conference last year that would qualify for that. It would be, have to be someone that was on the board for two years. So I'm just bringing that before the board to see if there is anyone that we as a board feel like we would want to put forward or if we want to forego that this year. Anyone have an opinion, comment, idea?
Well, how will we know, how will we know who qualifies for, who, who has achieved 32 points?
Ms. Moore typically keeps a record of our VSB A Academy points because they have to be submitted for those recognition programs. The good thing about the, that particular one, and I'm trying to, let me get out of this. That particular one is that 32 points, if you go to the annual meeting, really it doesn't take long to get because the, the, excuse me, the annual convention, because the annual convention itself is 16 Academy points. Ms. Moore, do you by chance still keep up with those?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I will need to get some time to pull that report down and I can send a minute back to the board.
And that is fine. And I think the deadline is like June 19th for this. So we've, we've got a little bit of time. Let's see, School Board Member of the Year. I'm bringing that up right now. So the School Board Member of the Year. Yes, we've got, actually nomination forms must be received by July 19th, so we still have time. So Ms. Moore, we can look at gathering that over the next month and bring that back and have that conversation. The, and then we would, if we did pick someone, we would fill it out and highlight, it's almost like building a resume for them. Highlight their list of accomplishments from what local board offices they've held as well as local board leadership activities. Board development activities that we have, that that individual has participated in and has to be at least an Award of Honor recipient from the SBA. And any other accomplishments in promoting student achievement. And like I said, we've got until July 19th to submit, so we've got time. So if we want to bring that back up next month and revisit that, that's absolutely fine. They do have to be a VSB A member of a school board within the preceding 12 months ending this June 30th, so just over the last year. And the, I'm gonna go back a page. Or two, or three. The Academy Awards, the point system. So the Award of Honor is 66 credits over a two-year period, which of course breaks down to 32 a year. And when it comes to those credits, the, um, the annual convention itself is 16 credits. And any governance training that we go through, we get credits for that as well. Which typically is, I believe, three credits per session. So right there, by attending, you know, we do the Board of Self-Evaluation every year, so that's three. Plus if we attended the annual convention last year, that's 16, so that's 19 right there. And if you were curious as to credits and what's assigned to what, that list is on the SBA's website. And there's, there's several other ones. I know, like Dr. Shelton, you've attended a couple of the SBA webinars in the past. The webinars, you do get one credit each. And I think all of us, I don't think Ms. Smith has, and Mr. McCurry, have you attended the new board member orientation yet?
Is that online?
I think they are doing it virtually right now. It's usually, it's a one-day thing and it's like an all-day thing and they walk through Robert's Rules and some other things. Kind of, it's kind of like a crash course on how to be a board member.
Right. No.
That, that right there within itself is six credits if you attend that. So those are, um, those are things that do add up over time. So even if you did like the new board orientation, any went to the annual convention. um, those two right there together are twenty-two credits. So it doesn't, it doesn't take a lot to get those credits racked up. So, um, Ms. Moore, if you can, over the next few weeks, gather that data for us and, um, if, if the board wants to entertain this, I guess that's the best place to start. Do we want to entertain looking at someone for School Board Member of the Year? It's not something we have to do. Anyone have a, an idea on that? Yes, no?
Let's look at the points and see who's eligible to.
Okay. We can do that. So Ms. Moore, can you gather that information for us and, um, get that out to us? And, um, if you can do that, do you think you can do that over the next couple of weeks?
Or?
Yes, I can.
Okay, okay. So if we can have that at the work session, we can take a quick look at that and see if that is something that we want to pursue or whether we just want to not consider that for this year. That'll be fine. All right. That is all that I had under Business by School Board Members. Does anyone else have anything? Cause I know it's late and I know we all want to get to number nine point one. Hearing none, then eight point two important dates. Um, tomorrow is session number three of our master board training. Just a reminder, that is virtual. Um, everyone should have the link for that. That starts promptly at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Um, please check your email tonight and make sure that you do have that link. And if you do not, please go ahead and reach out to Ms. Moore and let her know so that she can send that to you first thing in the morning. Um, Memorial Day is on Monday, May thirty-first this year and all schools as well as offices will be closed. Um, we are literally down to the last four weeks of school. Um, our next work session will be on June the third in city council chambers. Um, that will be in person. And the next day, and that's not up here, is a very important day in the division as well. Friday, June fourth is graduation. Um, we're, we're throwing it back old school and going back to Armory Field for graduation. Um, it's gonna be like deja vu for me. Um, then, um, Monday, June fourteenth is the official last day of school for our students for the regular school year. And that Thursday, June seventeenth, we will have a, our regular school board meeting. And then, of course, that pushes us to our final master board training on the twenty-fifth. Any questions on any of that? Eight point three is just minutes from our, um, work session back on the sixth. Those are just for review. Those will come back to us next month for final approval. Anything else? Well, I want to thank all of you for powering through tonight. That's been a, it's been a long, um, three and a half hours. So that's gonna bring us down to nine point one. Um, so anyone that wants to stay, that does not want to stay for the night, want to make a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Well, I guess everyone wants to go home then, so I guess we are now officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Again, congratulations to all of our teachers. You all so deserve that. Thank you to our administrators and our staff. And I wish everyone a good night. See you guys all again soon. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.